And then I'll promote him to a panel. What was that?
Do I need to let our guy know that we're ready to go?
No, I think Mario's watching already.
Okay, so I'm going to call this meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Monterey Tuesday, October 11th to order. And we'll start with a roll call.
Chair Fletcher.
Here.
Vice Chair Milich.
Here.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Present.
Commissioner Dawson.
Here.
Commissioner Freeman.
Here.
Commissioner Latassa.
Here.
For staff, we have Community Development Director Kim Cole, Senior Associate Planner Chris Schmidt, Rachel Recording Secretary for Clearing. I will also take this moment to announce how those at home can join. Members of the public are encouraged to join our meeting via Zoom Gov, a secure service that connects you live with no lag time. This meeting is also streamed live on youtube.com/cityofmonterey with a 10-second delay and Comcast Channel 25 with up to a 90-second delay. If you would like to provide public comment, please join the meeting using Zoomer by telephone, making sure to join in time to accommodate delays. To join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. Since the meeting has begun, you'll find the agenda under the recent tab. To join by telephone, dial 833-568-8864 toll-free. Once again, that phone number is 833-568-8864. It is a toll-free number, and there are more listed on the meeting agenda at iSearchMonterey.org. You'll need the webinar ID 1619908039. Once again, this webinar ID for this meeting is 1619908039. If prompted for a participant ID, press pound. Detailed instructions for using Zoom are available at monterey.org-publicmeetings. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. Public commenters will be announced using their last three phone number digits or the name typed into Zoom. Public commenters will be muted until it is their turn to speak. Please turn off TV or computer speakers or go to another room while connected as background noise interferes with the broadcast. Public speakers will be called in order of hands raised. There's a three-minute time limit for today's meeting, please stay within that limit.
Okay, thank you.
Definitely.
First up on our agenda will be our consent agenda, which includes the minutes for September 13th, 2022 and September 27th, 2022. Is there, I'd like to do vote on these separately. Are there any comments for September 13th?
Nope.
Can I have a motion for approval of September 13th minutes?
So.
Mike, you want to take that as a second?
Yes, please.
Hey. Okay, all those in favor approving these minutes, roll call please.
Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Chair, Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Thank you, these minutes are approved, the September 13th, 2022 minutes are approved.
Great, thank you, now on to September 27th, 2022. Any comments?
Nope.
No.
Motion for approval?
No, I have a comment.
Okay, go back to Mike.
Yeah, on page four of the minutes.
Yes.
It says that I made a statement of oppose allowing installation of new poles. That's, since that's obviously a summary of what was said. I don't recall that, and I don't have an opinion on new poles, so I would just ask that that phrase be struck.
Okay.
And with that, I will make a motion to accept those minutes. And I'll second it.
Okay, there's a motion, and second, we have vote.
Chair Fletcher.
I abstain because of my absence.
Thank you. Vice Chair Milich.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
All right, the September 27th, 2022 PC minutes are approved as amended with the phrase stricken from the record of Mr. Commissioner Brassfield saying he opposes allowing installations of new poles.
Okay, moving on, public comments, these are for anybody that would like to speak to the commission on items that are not on the agenda, but items that are under the purview of the planning commission, you have a maximum three minutes. Is there anyone online or in the chamber that has something to say to the commission?
There are a few members online viewing the public, I mean viewing the meeting. So, to provide public comment via Zoom, please use the Raise Your Hand function at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when you're called upon. This is for items not on the agenda. And no hands are raised.
Okay, then we'll move on to our public hearing, item number four. This is to consider 113 Spray Avenue variance application VA 220132 to increase the maximum allowed building height from 25 feet to 30 feet or inches on a portion of an existing three-story, single-family dwelling. The applicant is Alan Robinson, the owner is Stephen Meyer. This is R16B1 zoning district. Lo, it's the residential land use designation and is exempt from CEQA, can we have staff report?
Thank you Chair Fletcher, my name's Kimberly Cole and I'm the Community Development Director and this afternoon I'll be making the presentation. Can everybody see my screen?
Yes.
Yes.
Great. As the chair introduced, this afternoon you're considering a height variance for a residential structure located at 113 Spray Avenue. If it will forward. There we go. On the left-hand side of your screen, you see the Del Monte Beach subdivision. Spray Avenue is about in the middle of the residential subdivision. And then it's, as you can see in the photograph to the right, there's several single-family homes that surround the property. And there's an existing house that you can see on the lot. And it has a gable roof facing the street. At the back of the structure, the structure is a three-story structure. And at the front, you can sort of see it looks as two stories at the front and the lots slopes down towards the rear. And this is not atypical for structures that were built in the 80s and 70s in Del Monte Beach. There were different height requirements at the time when many of these structures were constructed. And so the proposal is to really transform this structure into a more modern-looking structure and to change the roof line from a gable to basically more of a flat roof. And by changing the profile of the roof, the result is, is the applicant is needing to request an additional five feet, four inches above the 25-foot height limit for a total of about 30 feet, four inches at the structure's maximum height. And as you can see in this graphic, you can see the outline of the original gable roof. And then you can see that new orange roof line, and you can see where basically that five, four inches is being increased. And this is another graphic depiction of the structure. You can see that this is at the back of the structure where the most extreme height elevation is. And I believe what the architect was trying to show with the yellow angle through is that portions of the roof, that's basically where the 25-foot mark is on the site because of the slope of the lot. So this is how this structure currently fits into the streetscape. And you can see, we had them install story pole staking because it was directly related to a view issue. So you can see that proposed new flat roof line that's partially visible from the street side. And at the back is where we would really see those height limits being exceeded.
Yeah.
I think the planning commission is well aware of, but just for the public to understand as well, variances are guided by both state law and our city municipal code. And basically what the variance findings say is that if a city adopts regulations, there has to be substantive reasons, or what they call findings, that make this property different than other properties within the zoning district. And so that first finding that's embedded in both our local ordinance and state law says that because of special circumstance or condition applicable to the subject property, including size, shape, topography, location, or surroundings, strict application of the requirements of this ordinance deprives such property of privileges enjoyed by other properties in the vicinity and under an identical zoning classification. And staff cannot, or has concluded that there are no special circumstances because the lot size, topography, location, and surroundings are basically the same for the adjacent lots. And the proposal actually increases the discrepancy between the existing condition and the regulation versus decreases it. The second finding is that granting the application will not be detrimental or injurious to property or improvements in the vicinity of the development site or to the public health, safety, or general welfare. And we know that basically the courts have very broadly defined health, safety, or general welfare. And our conclusion is that granting of the 30 feet plus height may be detrimental to the properties in the vicinity as it may block or partially block someone's view of the ocean. And generally, the expectation when residents of this neighborhood purchased their property or constructed their homes is that everyone would be subject to the same height limit that's been in existence now, at least since the early 90s. And the last, one of the last findings is, is that granting the application is consistent with the purposes of this ordinance and will not constitute a grant of special privilege inconsistent with limitations on other properties in the vicinity and in the same zoning district. Staff has concluded that the variance request could decrease the quality of the Del Monte Beach neighborhood by allowing homes to exceed the current 25 height limit, thereby blocking or reducing ocean views. View sharing is only achievable if all the properties follow the precise guide for the physical development of the city that is included in the current zoning ordinance. Staff has concluded that our recommendation to you is to deny the variance finding because it does not meet the required variance findings. I do want to make a distinction for the public. You know, staff is not saying that this is a bad design in terms of its form or architectural character. There's a lot of positives about the proposed design. It's really in regards to the height requirement and its potential impact on adjoining properties. We did receive several letters, I think we got three more since the public packet's been published. I think we have five or six in favor. We've received three against the project since the packet was published, and I think a couple prior. So we have a mixed input from the community. So far, you know, about half of the letters recommended approval and about half recommended denial. So I will conclude my presentation, our recommendation is to deny the variance.
Thank you, Kim, questions for Kim?
Just one quick question, is this the first hearing on this issue? Or had this been looked at by Architectural Review previously?
No, this would be the first hearing, so a project that requires a variance, we schedule it for the planning commission first to make a judgment on whether the findings are there for the variance. And then ultimately, the, the design of the building will be reviewed by our Architectural Review Committee.
Thank you.
I have a question, Kim. Did the applicant make their case for findings on this variance request?
They did, and it's, I believe it's attached to the resolution. Their findings, you know, they really point out a lot of the existing homes in the neighborhood that have that three-story form at the back of the building. Now, in the 1990s, I believe the city changed its height requirement. And it's now, well, it's clearly now 25 feet. And it's measured from existing or finished grade, which is ever, whichever is more restrictive. So they really pointed that they thought it would look very similar to the other structures in the neighborhood because of other homes that exist today.
So when you, when the height limit was changed, back in the 90s, you say, how, how often has something like this come up where we're, we're fighting against an old height and now we have a new height and we're trying to reconcile it?
Um, I will say with every addition in Del Monte Beach, views are debated. Most of the projects fall today within our height limit for the new construction. We may have existing construction that's non-conforming, but the new construction will meet our height limit. Even when it meets our height limit, it's not unusual that the, at the Architectural Review Committee level that there's debates about, from the neighbors wanting more of the blue ocean line to be retained or the addition shifted to the right or to the left. So we haven't had one of these at the planning commission level in years, but I can remember several cases in front of the Architecture Review Committee.
Hmm.
Three of us on this board were on that board at the time.
I'm sorry, I missed, was that a question?
Three, three of us on this board were on the ARC at the time we, we had those debates.
Good, no. Um, the last question I have is on the image with the yellow plane that reflects the height limit. Do we have any idea what percentage of the proposed design roof sticks above the height limit in relationship to the entire area of the roof?
I didn't calculate it that way, my sense is it is the back corner of the building, so about 25, 25% less than 50% of the building will exceed the height limit.
Thank you. Any questions, other questions for Kim?
Yeah, I have one question. Let's say that the owner went ahead with the remodel and created a more modern-looking house and complied with the height limit, but instead of a gable roof, created a flat roof. And on the flat roof, he had access to the roof from inside the house because what he wanted was a view deck. And if he put a four-foot railing around this flat roof consisting of a railing that acts like a parapet, would that require a variance?
Any portion of the structure other than chimneys, mechanical equipment, and some of those types of items would have to be a maximum of the 25 feet.
Okay.
Any other questions for Kim?
I have a.
Sorry.
Oh, sorry, Mike.
Oh wait.
Go ahead, Mike.
My, my question to Kim was just the same as, as, as Dan Fletcher's. Is it, how, how often has this come up? And, and how often has, how often has the variance been granted? That, that would be a useful information.
I will say at least in the last I can't remember a similar variance in the last 10 years.
Kim, is that, that was accepted or applied for?
That was even applied for.
So I have a few questions, Mr. Chair.
Sure. Go ahead.
So thanks, Kim, the, so the three stories thing, it was built in 1966. And the even though the code back then apparently was two and a half stories max. So, but we end up with three stories now, is that because like the definition of a story has changed or something?
It has.
Okay. That was easy. So then, what about the Neighborhood Association, did they have a review of this?
Um, we did not receive a comment letter from the Neighborhood Association specifically.
Okay, and then finally, the, the three findings, there, we have to make all three. It isn't two out of three or one out of three or whatever, it's all three findings have to be made to approve it.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
To deny it.
Uh, yeah, to deny it, okay, thank you.
Okay. Everybody time in on this? Okay, so I think it's time to go to the applicant, clearly the applicant isn't in the chamber, Sarah, is he online?
There are some individuals online. And the applicant's name is Alan Robinson, and I do not see them in the call. So if you are the applicant, please raise your hand. Either by pressing the name, the Raise Your Hand button in Zoom, or pressing star nine if you are joined by phone. I do not see any hands being raised, and there is no one in the chambers right now watching.
So if that's the case, I'm not sure why that's happened because I, I spoke to Mr. Robinson last Friday, I believe it was. You can go ahead and accept public comment on this application, but I would recommend we continue it to the next meeting so the applicant has the opportunity to present their case if maybe they're having login difficulties or something that's unexpected.
Fair enough. Is there anybody online that would like to speak to this?
Once again, to provide public comment via Zoom, please raise your hand using the Raise Your Hand button at the bottom of your screen. Or to provide comments by phone, dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon. No hands are currently being raised.
Do we need a motion to continue?
Yes, we do.
And can that motion include a continuance to October 25th?
We have a pretty full calendar there.
Yes, I don't have a problem with that, would someone like to make a motion to that effect?
Sure, mate.
There we go, Mike, thank you, second? There we go, Mike. Thank you. Second?
Second.
There you go. Roll call vote, please.
Chair Fletcher?
Yes.
Um, Vice Chair Milic.
Reluctant, yes.
Commissioner Brassfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson?
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman?
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. This item was continued to the October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting.
Okay, moving on to item number five. Consider three-five-zero Cali Principal Use Permit Amendment, PA twenty-two zero-one-three-five to allow modifications to an existing Dish Wireless LLC personal wireless service facility. The applicant is Adam Burlich, J-Five Infrastructure Partners on behalf of Dish, and the owner is San Carlos Associates, Associates. It is visitor accommodation facility zoning district, commercial, general plan, land use designation. It's exempt from CEQA. We have a staff report.
Um, Chair Fletcher, because the applicant is still working on their submittal package to the Planning Office, we're recommending continuance to October twenty-fifth.
Okay.
Easy, Dave.
Would someone like to make that motion, please?
So move.
Before we do that, is there a time clock issue here?
So we have a shot clock agreement with them until early November, which will cover the Planning Commission hearing. I am a little disappointed in that I had the shortcut clock originally developed to also cover the City Council appeal period. But, so at the next meeting, if the drawings are not in line, anyways, we'll have a discussion about that issue.
Okay, so have a motion.
Second.
And a second, and we have a roll call vote, please.
Actually, discussion?
Yes, I'm sorry.
In the packet, we have a continuing problem. Questions are were asked of the applicant that goes contrary to our requirements that we have reports made by engineers to answer the questions that the engineer is qualified to make. And the person says, well, maybe I'll try. And so what happens is that we have comments with, once again, without the input of a qualified engineer to answer those questions. I, we just need to get, to get around this issue. It constantly comes down to different qualifications of engineers to answer questions. And frequently, we don't have those engineers at these meetings. So is our ordinance need to be fixed, or how can we resolve this? Kim, any suggestions?
So I do see the applicant wants to make a comment on this, on these, this agenda item. So we may want to open it up to them first.
Okay, that, thank you.
Let's do that.
Okay. Adam Ehrlich, you should be able to unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I'm Adam Ehrlich, the applicant. We do have an RF radio frequency engineer scheduled to appear at the next meeting, October twenty-fifth, who will answer any and all questions regarding uh, radio, radio admissions, emissions.
Thank you. Okay, so Andrew was, and who was the second? Mike?
Mike.
Mike? And are we ready to take a roll call vote?
Yes.
Okay, let's do it.
Uh, we do need to open public comment. So just real quick, to join the Zoom meeting from a computer or phone, use the link or phone numbers on the agenda posted at iSearchMonterey.org. The telephone number to join is eight-three-three-five-six-eight-eight-eight-six-four. The webinar ID is one-six-one-nine-nine-zero-eight-zero-three-nine. To provide public comment via Zoom, please use the raise your hand function at the bottom of your screen. To provide comments by phone dial star nine to raise your hand, then star six to unmute when called upon.
Great.
No hands are raising.
Okay.
And for the vote, we have Chair Fletcher.
Yes.
Vice Chair Milic.
Yes.
Commissioner Brassfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Dawson.
Yes.
Commissioner Freeman.
Yes.
Commissioner Latassa.
Yes.
Thank you. This item is also continued to a date certain of October twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay. Next is Commissioner Comments.
Okay, so Kim, I, you know, I'm going on a trip on Sunday, and I'll be back. So I'm gone from the October seventeenth to November seventeenth. So what, I, I'm, I, I should have looked this up before, I apologize, but what, what PC meetings will I be missing?
So you'll be missing October twenty-fifth. I believe it's November eighth. And let me just look at the second meeting in November. I don't have that date in my head. So you'll be missing October twenty-fifth, November eighth. And then when do you come back in November?
The seventeenth.
Yes, if we do have the meeting on November twenty-second, you'll make that.
It's Thanksgiving, traditionally week.
Okay, well, I, so I will not be here for October twenty-fifth and November eighth. Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, and I guess I did have one other comment. The, this whole housing thing is becoming such a nightmare for everybody. Local jurisdictions are trying to grapple with it. And there was an article in the paper about the uh, partial solution to it being old-fashioned residential hotel kind of units which state code currently doesn't recognize as satisfying their requirement. So I was wondering if, if, you know, maybe the way some jurisdictions around the state get together and, you know, maybe various jurisdictions, including us, could have applied to the state to try to, you know, modify that definition a bit to allow those. Seems like it would maybe alleviate this, this forest of six-story residential apartment buildings that you foresee. So just wanted to throw that out there as a, something that we should be looking at, you know, all the jurisdictions in the state should be hammering their representatives for, for that kind of a, you know, definitional kind of change. That's all.
Good gun.
May I suggest, Terry, that you check with the league from the cities of Sacramento, see if there's anything going in that direction?
Good idea.
Yeah, that is a good idea. Okay, informational reports and staff comments?
So the October twenty-fifth meeting is very robust, and I'm having to move some things off that agenda. I was anticipating a decision on one thirteen Spray tonight, so that did not happen. So we will have one thirteen Spray Avenue on your agenda. Three fifty Kai Principal, which is the wireless facility that we briefly just continued to the next meeting. There will be the Green Belt initial study. You already approved that once, but this is expanding the project description to include the old capital site.
Hmm.
Good, good.
There will be a historic rezoning recommendation from the HPC on eight-twenty-eight Pacific Street. And then I'm hoping that the whole evening can be wireless. So we're I am moving what was on your tentative agenda, where the objective design standards, there's no way we can do that at the same meeting. So we're not noticing that until November, for the November eighth meeting.
Voting night.
Yes, and it's election night.
That's right.
We will have a, see if we find out who our new council members are.
Oh, boy.
Um, Planning Office update?
That was that.
Okay. Anything else? Because the next item is to adjourn. Okay, meeting adjourned.
See you next time, Mike.
Thank you, everyone.